We scheduled planning and zoning commission meeting for April, where in April? Yeah. Time is flying. Welcome, everybody. Thank you for coming out tonight. We have a number of items on the agenda. First up is our citizens' general discussion. This is a discussion item, I'll open a public hearing if you wish to discuss something in general about the city relating to planning and zoning. If you have something that you want to talk about regarding a specific case, I'll open a public hearing during each specific case. So I'm going to head and open this public hearing. Is anybody wish to speak about any, you know, any general issue regarding planning and zoning for the city? All right, then I'll go ahead and close that public meeting. Next up, we need to consider the approval of minutes for March 19, 2025, commissioners?
Sort of move.
All those in favor of approving the March minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next, we are going to administer the oath of office for new members of the planning commission, the planning and zoning commission, James Stevenson. And is Lisa Pendleton here? No? Okay. So just two.
Don't he go down or should I hear Paul?
Do you want him to go down?
No, it's fine.
Okay, go ahead.
Raise your hand and repeat after me. Uh, state your name.
Uh, James Stevenson.
Do solemnly swear that I will faithfully execute the duties of the office.
Do solemnly swear that I will execute the duties of the office.
Of commissioner of the planning and zoning commission.
Of commissioner of the planning and zoning commission.
Of the city of Stevieville, Texas.
Of the city of Stevieville, Texas.
And will, to the best of my abilities.
And to the best of my abilities.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
Of this state, so help me God.
Of this state, so help me God.
Thank you. Okay. We're going to go slightly out of order on the agenda, just because I know that this group, I suspect, is here for the very, the first item on the agenda. And we're just going to skip real quick to something that'll just take a few minutes so this person can get out of here before we dive in. So we're going to go to the ninth item on the agenda, which is Jason Nitski is requesting a replat of property located at 791 North Clinton, parcel R 33319, being block 14, lots 12 and 13 of the S 5700 Shepherd &amp; Collins addition of the city of Stevieville, E wrath County, Texas. Mr. Killen.
Thank you, Madam Chair, commissioners. Mr. Nitski, you might recall, came to the commission and city council a few months back and actually requested for a rezone of this property from R 3 to R 2.5. He's wanting to build duplex homes on this parcel. It gives him enough room to actually build four duplexes. What he does have to have is an approval for a variance request for the depth of each lot. That went to Board of Adjustment at a previous hearing, and they did grant the reduction in the lot depth for the single parcel. But as he moves forward with this replat, it's going to have to be reapprued for each individual parcel. They basically, being, they being the Board of Adjustment, have indicated that they are favorable for that variance. And so with this replat, and there's a, we did include a copy of the replat in the packet for you on page 35. We're asking that the commission consider approving this replat with conditions. The conditions are listed on the staff report, but I'll just run through these quickly. There's just a few. Again, we need the variances for each lot that's represented on the plat. It has to conform with the subdivision ordinance upon the conclusion of reviews by staff. It may not have any structures placed over easements. Additional easements may be required as we get into further review of the building plans themselves, and then also ensure that all the plat language is provided on the plat. With that, Madam Chair, be glad to answer any questions, and I'll see that Mr. Nitski is here as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Steve?
Does the replat have anything to do with how the egress and entry to the property is set up?
Actually, each, each home will face onto Shirley Street.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Good question.
Mr. Nitski, do you have anything to add? Thank you. I'll go ahead and open a public hearing. Is there anybody here who wishes to speak in favor or against this replat? Go ahead and close the public hearing, commissioners?
Make a motion, we approve RP 8689 with conditions.
Second.
All those in favor of approving this replat with conditions, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right. All right, so Mr. Nitski, you're done.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Okay, now we're going to pop back up to the top of the agenda. We're beginning with application number RZ 8714. Megan Leatherwood, representing 500 Investment Corporation, is requesting a rezone of property located at Zero Alexander Road, parcel R 67158, being approximately 17.46 acres of the A 0196 John P Dupuy abstract of the city of Stevieville, E wrath County, Texas, from R 1, single-family residential, to R 1.5, single-family, 5,000 feet. Mr. Killen.
Thank you, Madam Chair, commissioners. The applicant, Mr., well, Megan Leatherwood, and, my goodness, drawing a blank up here, good friend of mine, and I don't remember his name all of a sudden. I apologize for that. Wes Bishop, there we go. Wes Bishop. Sorry about that, Wes. They're requesting a rezone of this parcel out by Elk Ridge and next to Elk Ridge Church. They're asking for a rezone to R 1.5, which does allow a lot dimension of 50 by 100 instead of the 75 by 100 required with the current zoning of R 1. They're, they have provided a preliminary site plan. We've reviewed that in a pre-development meeting with city staff, provided some input to them on that. They're making some modifications. They have a pretty solid site plan. And what looks to be what we'll be moving forward with, with some modifications for a preliminary plat, once they give us their civil plan submittal. Most of these lots do exceed that minimum lot dimension quite significantly. There are a few lots in the site plan that are reduced down to the 50 by 100. And again, this is just for a rezone for single-family housing. So Mr. Bishop and Ms. Leatherwood are here tonight to answer any specific questions about the site plan. However, Madam Chair, I think that addresses most of the, most of the things that I wanted to bring forward. You understand, of course, that we are now under a new comprehensive plan, which is Stevieville 2050. And that 2050 plan designates this as a complete neighborhood. That, that comprehensive plan designation would allow smaller lot homes and a mixed-use type of residential homes in the complete neighborhood. So it would align with the 2050 comprehensive plan. That being stated, we have not updated our land use regulations to completely align with that comprehensive plan. We're moving forward that now, and we'll be bringing a contract to city council near future. I just wanted to make the point that if the comprehensive plan does allow this type of development for this particular location.
Thank you. Any questions for Steve?
Where are they going to get their sewer access?
So I believe that's going to require a private easement from an adjacent property, and that's been discussed with the developer, and they're fully aware of that requirement.
But they haven't obtained it yet?
Not to this day, no sir. Or not to my knowledge. There's also, on the previous Elk Ridge development, we have six-inch sewer lines stubbed out from that development with access points that I believe that they'll be able to, you know, from whatever call the topography allows them to connect to that, and it would be adequate service for the development. Anything else would require a private easement, but I don't think that's really necessary based on the location of the sewer lines. And then also, I believe, when they developed Elk Ridge to begin with, they also had some water line stub outs as well that would allow them to connect for the future phases of this development. This was at first presented to us as Elk Ridge phase, future phase, and this was going to be the next phase of Elk Ridge, but they have changed the name of the development, I believe, to Bear Hill 1. And so that doesn't affect anything as far as the legal notifications that were issued, but in the staff report, it may be referred to as Elk Ridge, and technically now it's going to be referred to as Bear Hill. And I believe that covers everything.
And that's the same developer that did Elk Ridge?
Yes, sir.
As it stands now, did you, did you say you knew how many lots would change from that to the smaller dimensions? I know it's preliminary.
Yes, ma'am. And there will be further modifications to the site plan, I believe, based on some additional items that they are researching. But I think I would be better off deferring that particular question to the developer on the number of lots that may have a smaller dimension. And so if you don't mind, Madam Chair, I'd prefer to let the developer answer that.
Can you, can you speak about Alexander Road and what would be done regarding traffic issues?
So Alexander Road is a state highway, and they will have to have driveway permit applications submitted with TechDOT. If I recall correctly, they've already moved forward with that. TechDOT will allow the access onto the highway. More than likely, they will require a TIA, a traffic impact analysis. But I believe that Mr. Bishop or Ms. Leatherwood would be able to speak more in detail about that.
Thank you. Any other questions?
What about the street sizes going through the neighborhood? Has that been discussed?
They'll meet the minimum dimensions of the city street by city specifications. And that, for this particular development and any development of this nature, those local streets are a 50-foot right away.
Any questions for Steve? All right, can I ask one of the developers, whomever wishes to come up to the podium? Ms. Leatherwood, could you just state your name, your address?
My name's Megan Leatherwood. My address is 1035 Antelope Trail.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I'll go ahead and just let you speak, but we may have some questions for you. Do you have any remarks you'd like to make?
Yeah, sure. First off, I know we've had a lot of concerns, and so I just wanted to take a minute to address those. I know Steve's gotten a lot of emails, and there's been a lot of social media talk. First of all, I wanted to thank you guys for listening to us and considering our request for rezoning. Basically, the first thing I wanted to go over is the average lot size. The average lot size is well over the 5,000 square foot minimum. It's 8,014 square feet, which is well over even R 1. So I know there's been lots of comments of, they're going to be tiny homes, or they're going to be, you know, really small homes. I can't speak to that because we're the developer. I'm not sure what homeowners are going to build on those lots once the lots are sold. But I can tell you that our largest lot out there is over 14,000 square feet. And then, like I said, the average lot size is 8,014 square feet. A few things, Stephen spoke about the comprehensive plan. I looked back at 2030 and some of the goals there. Goal 2.3 encouraged housing diversity. This project supports a broader range of housing types and prices, allowing first-time home buyers, local professionals, to live in Stevieville. It also, these slightly, slightly smaller lots mean more efficient use of infrastructure and land consistent with smart growth principles. And then goal 5.2 was walkable and connected neighborhoods, which these will definitely be because we have to do the sidewalks. So that's great. We're looking forward to it. The, the main concern that I've heard from everyone that lives out at Elk Ridge, which I myself live out at Elk Ridge, so is this will lower our property values, and I just wanted to speak to that. Our 1.5 homes will be new, modern, and designed to complement the neighborhood. Studies show that quality development increases surrounding home values, not decreases it. So there's absolutely nothing that can speak to, you know, decreasing your property values. And then another big concern was these will be low-quality or rental homes. Again, I can't, I can't speak to that, but I can say that homes will be thoughtfully planned, single-family residences. We anticipate most of them will be owner-occupied, just as it is in Elk Ridge Estates currently, and built to meet or exceed market expectations. And another big concern, you guys even brought it up, the traffic increase. And my response to that is the density difference is minimal and will be addressed through thoughtful traffic planning and safe ingress egress along non-14 Alexander Road. So all traffic engineering will, of course, comply with city standards as well as TechDOT, and we are well underway with TechDOT.
Commissioners, give any questions for Ms. Leatherwood?
Yeah, I have one because you said the largest lot size and the medium. What's the smallest lot size?
The smallest lot size, Wes, do you have that? We had a couple of those that were.
60 to 50.
So all over 5,000?
50 by 125 ish.
Well over 5,000.
And less than, less than a third of the lots are the 50-foot width. Almost all of them are larger than that. The reasoning was, we're just bound by certain places where the lots got to be slightly smaller, but the lot area is larger than the minimum R 1, R 1 requirements.
Go ahead, Nick.
So all lots exceed the 5,000 square foot, is that what I just heard?
Absolutely. All lots, yes, sir.
The smallest one is 60 to 50. And I think it was one of them.
So why the 1.5?
Because some of them are only, we're bound by those 50-foot width, as opposed to the 75-foot width with R 1. Right.
And that's the way the code's written, even though we may exceed the lot area?
It's the width. Correct.
So they're deeper, but?
Yes.
Gotcha.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, so you are only selling the land. The development is, it's being purchased by the people who wish to own and develop it individually, is that correct?
The lots themselves.
So you're just selling the lots?
Yes.
No development, no building?
We will develop.
Yes.
You'll develop the lots, but you're not building?
That's correct.
Correct. Okay. Thank you. Commissioners, any other questions? All right, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you guys so much for your consideration.
All right, now I'm going to go ahead and open a public hearing. I will begin with those people who are opposed to this rezone request. I've got a stack here, and I'll work my way through them. When you come up to the podium, you'll have three minutes to speak. You'll need to state your name and your address. And if somebody feels moved to speak and you haven't filled one of these out, you can come up and fill one out after, okay? So we are going to start with Don Heditter. Would you like to come up to the podium?
I am opposed to the building.
I'm sorry, sir. Could you begin with your, your name and your address?
I'm sorry. Don Heditter, 1735 Bull Elk Drive in Stevieville. I'm concerned what it's going to do both with property values and taxes. And I think my biggest concern is the traffic pattern. Right now, there's only one way in and out of Elk Ridge Estates. And I don't, haven't seen anything where they're saying, you know, they're going to put, I know they're going to have to put more roads in, but I don't know where they're going to go. I haven't seen any, any plans as to where these roads are going or how you go getting in and out of these states. Clearly, my main, my main concern is taxes, property value, and traffic.
All right, thank you very much, sir. Appreciate it. Next up, Megan Whites.
Hi, I'm Megan Whites, and I live at 1060 Antelope Trail. And I am opposed, I'm not going to speak long, but I just would like to say that when I built my house out there 13 years ago, I was promised something else. And I understand that there'll be development there, and I'm great with that. I just think that it should stay the way it is. That's what we were all promised. That's why I chose to put my family there. And the traffic is terrible. The streets are already crowded. Kids grow up, they start driving. I've had two accidents right out in front of my house where cars have gotten smashed. So the streets are super crowded already. So, you know, just the extra families that will be there will create more accidents, more traffic. There's kids everywhere on their bicycles, and I love that, and I hope it stays that way. But when you have accidents, and I sure would never want to see a child get ran over. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much. Kristy Sharp.
I am Kristy Sharp, and I live at 1721 Antelope Trail. And I do oppose this because, for one, like Megan just said, I didn't buy this house because it was in the middle of town where there's thousands of people around. It's secluded. We have our own space and privacy, and with this development, we're not going to have that. And as she just spoke, they have no idea what they're going to develop. So why would we trust in anything? If they can't meet what our houses currently look like, then why would we get that? That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Chuck Bush.
Chuck Bush, 1736 Bull Elk Drive. First of all, I'm not a public speaker, not a politician, or a crook for that matter. So please bear with me. I'd like to congratulate Commissioner Stevenson on your appointment and thank the rest of the board for being here to, to listen to us. I'm assuming y'all saw the letter that I provided. Does everybody have that letter, sir? Okay, so you, you pretty much already know what I'm going to point out, and that this development, as it's been, as all the research that we've put together to try to learn about it, to try to really, truly determine the impact, it's very difficult to find, okay? All we get is a letter saying somebody wants to change the zone. And so we do our research, we find out what the potential impacts are of that zoning change, and we can only assume the worst. Would you agree? Because just like what we were just told, they don't know what they're going to develop there, and then it's going to be each individual landowner. Well, the zones, the districting in this town are here to protect us from this very thing. So in my humble opinion, changing the rules after the fact is certainly not fair, and I don't think it's in compliance with your own standards here. So I'm, I'll try to be brief. I, I put down a group because I am representing a group of neighbors. I only did that because I don't want to get cut off really quick, but I do not need to go for 10 minutes.
Okay, who all are you representing?
Oh, they're down there.
Okay.
Okay. So first of all, in, in language from your own website, this is grossly inconsistent with the surrounding neighborhoods. We're talking Elk Ridge, but right on the other side of us, we've got another much bigger neighborhood. So the requested, the requested impact is density. I could not find anywhere in your rules a definition of what's low density, what's medium density, what's high density in terms of so many people per X number of acres or whatever. Okay, so, so there's concern, and I would consider, I would consider Elk Ridge right now at medium density. And certainly the plat that we saw from the city, this would be a high-density area. Okay? So the impacts on us is going to be a significant reduction in privacy. My neighbor, which, right here, right behind his lot, four houses to one lot. There's significant reduction in privacy. Okay? And that's referencing the city of Stevieville, Elk Ridge, proposed Phase 4. I did hear a name change. I'm not sure what else has changed since then. Okay, another significant increase is going to be in noise and congestion. Okay? The increase in, in traffic, the plat that we saw shows these neighborhoods connected by Elk Run Drive, is that correct? Or has that changed?
This is the proposed layout.
So that is correct. So now you're going to add all of that traffic into our neighborhoods. Okay? And again, assuming the worst, based on, on what the code says and everything, it, each one of these houses will allow up to four non-blood-related relatives, is that correct? Or individuals, adults? Okay? And so if you do a little bit of math, that's going to add over 280 vehicles to the traffic that we already have in our neighborhood. That's a huge increase. Okay? With that comes some serious safety concerns. For our children, we don't have sidewalks in Elk Ridge. Okay? And we're going to dump more traffic into there, so there's going to be a series of safety concerns there. We are already seeing property damage just from the congestion in our, in our low to medium intensity, our density neighborhoods, right? We've seen mailboxes destroyed, we've seen cars hit. We've seen a lot in the four brief years that I lived there. Okay? And also, depending on, you know, putting these houses in, what's, what's the name of the neighborhood that we looked at with 5,000 lots? Sully, Sully Court? I mean, we can envision, looking at that plat, we can envision Sully Court along that entire property line of us, you know, significantly reducing the, the character and the charm, the aesthetics of our neighborhood. Okay? Also, you're talking about roads. I know state highway, but what about Alexander, what about Alexander and South Loop, that intersection? Sometimes it's taken us three, four lights to get through there already. Is there plans from the city to expand that intersection, have turn lanes, or do, do something that would alleviate that? And then the other thing is, is it going to reduce or impact any of the services we, we currently enjoy from the city? As far as property value, I totally disagree with Ms. Leatherwood. All the research I've looked at is going to, if you build a home that's half the price of a home that's right across the fence from it, it is going to impact property prices. Okay? All of that said, I also have some, we have some serious concerns with the legal and procedural issues here. All right? First of all, this lack of transparency. Okay, the city of Stevieville rezoning process lacks it and limits us opportunities for residents input and feedback in this. I didn't hear about this until I got a letter about 10 days ago, and there's zero information in that letter other than somebody wants to change this after the fact, after you've purchased your home. Okay? What are the reasons for that, other than we want to put more and make more? I mean, that's, that's the only thing we can assume. So there's no transparency at all on the purpose of the need to do this. Okay? So only, and with that, also only homeowners 200 feet from the parcel receive the letter. So how many letters were sent out? Does anybody know? Anybody?
We can get it.
It's, it really, you don't need to. I'm, I did a little bit of math and assumed, you know, looking at the plat, the 200-foot and all, so I would, I would guess that you reached 20% of the residents. However, this project will impact every single resident in Elk Ridge because of the traffic, because of the other concerns. So I, I don't think there, I mean, we're still talking to people that haven't even heard about that, you know, as late as today. Okay? Okay, and with that, I really have some serious concerns with incomplete or divisive data that's going to be taken from all of this. I mean, certainly, you guys can make a recommendation to the city council and say, well, we had a few people opposed. We had, what, 15 people from Elk Ridge, or less than 10% or something like that? While that data may be true, it, it's not representative of the situation, because remember, all of Elk Ridge has not been notified about this. I would like the opportunity for everybody in Elk Ridge to be able to have a say and to have the knowledge that somebody's changing the rules after the fact on the purchase of their home, it's going to affect the price, it's going to affect their safety, and all the other things I mentioned. Okay? And then the other things, rezoning may conflict with existing zoning laws meant to protect the community's interests, and I'll get, I'll get in that in a minute. But, so there's some inconsistencies I found, too. In section, in your own code, an R 1 is 7,500 square feet. It's right in the title, you know, minimum lot size. What does it say for R 1.5 in your title?
6,000 square feet.
6,000 feet. 6,000 feet, okay? But then, you get down into the text of it, and it mentions 5,000 feet, so, so there's a conflict there, which may be a, a clerical error or whatever, but again, we can, we can only assume. And there's consequences to that difference too. Like, right now, there's zone for 7,500 square feet, but what else does that impact? The size, the minimum size that's required, right? And also the maximum size of the house that's required to build. So, there's, to me, there's a lot of things that weigh on your decision here, and that every one of them are going to impact us. So, and, and just so you know, I did a little bit of math, uh, well, first of all, the existing homes in Elk Ridge are between 10,000 and 20,000 square feet. It's a lot I live on, I'm fortunate, I live on a cul-de-sac, they would be putting three and a half homes on that same piece of property that my one home sits on. My neighbor, right next door, they're putting four homes right across from him, okay? Uh, but the math I did, the, the reduction, 5,000 square feet from R1, that's a 33 and a third percent difference. That's, that's a lot of difference, that's a lot of traffic, that's a lot of the things that we're concerned about right there. But if, if you look into it further, in thinking of keeping the aesthetics and the norm of our neighborhood, that's a 67%. 67% reduction in what is Elk Ridge today. Now, the plat that we got was for Elk Ridge Estates, I understand that there's a name change, and, you know, that's, that takes a little bit of concern off my shoulder, very, very little, but I didn't buy into a, a piece of property that was going to be turned into rental road, all right? So, the purpose that's proposed, in, in your own section 15402, zoning regulations of districts are designed to lessen congestion in the streets, this is a quote, "Lessen congestion in the streets to secure safety from fire." I think I skipped over that, but, uh, one of my concerns is, uh, with fire, with overslash and spreading, when you only have, again, the consequence of 5,000 square foot lots, is the set, the, the side setback is only five feet, so you're talking houses that are literally 10 feet apart, you know, and maybe have a wood foot in between, so I, I, I don't know how anybody can, um, argue that that doesn't create a safety concern. But, but back to your own code, quote, "Designed to lessen congestion in the streets to secure safety from fire, panic, or other dangers, to provide adequate light and air, to prevent the overcrowding of land, to avoid concentration of populations, et cetera." Furthermore, it goes on to say, quote, "They have been made with reasonable consideration, among other things, to the character of the district and the peculiar suitability for particular uses, and with view of conserving the value of buildings." Your own manual right there addresses every one of the concerns that I'm laying out for you, and I think it's reasonable to expect that that is what it is here, to protect neighbors from this very, neighborhoods from this very reason, okay? Again, I can't speak for everybody in Elk Ridge, but given the opportunity, we'll make sure that everybody's aware and that everybody has an opportunity to make a voice, but to do that, we're strongly opposed to this right now, and we're requesting that you, uh, you reject the request. So in conclusion, I'm asking you to simply read the zoning code of Stevensville, Texas, all right? It states the purpose and covers every one of our concerns, and I strongly ask you to represent the entrance of the current residents in opposing this. I think it's entirely reasonable, an entirely reasonable expectation that zoning codes and restrictions were established for this very reason, to protect us, the adjacent property owners, for somebody who's just trying to make, get more bang for their buck.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chuck. Thank you very much.
My name is Erin Compton, I live at 1,005 Antelope Trail. Um, and I am opposed as well, I have a lot of the same concerns that he addressed, and, um, some other ones as well, but based on what they had, there's 11 lots for our seven on Antelope Trail alone, that's a lot more people that are going to be there. Elk Run is supposed to be a cut-through, Elk Run is tiny. I mean, you can't even get a regular-sized car through there barely, when both sides have people parked on there. So having that be a cut-through to however many more houses is a serious safety issue. I've got five kids, three of which are still very small, two of which are driving, thankfully they haven't had any accidents, they don't go through there, but I do, and I've seen tailgates being smashed and mailboxes being crashed into, I don't know if it's just teenagers not paying attention or what. Also, okay, so they're just doing the lots, what's to stop a developer from purchasing several lots and trying to get it rezoned to be a multifamily housing going there? What, what recourse would we have there? We don't want a bunch of rentals. My house, when we bought it in 2000, 2020, I'm sorry, um, we had a hard time buying our house because there was no comps for our house. It's like a 4,000-ish square foot house on a larger lot. So what's going to happen when we go to try to sell our house, but there's no comps because all of these houses, there's two lots for our one lot where we live now? That's all, but thank you.
Hi folks, my name's Malcolm Dan, I live at 1743 Bull Elk. I don't know whether you guys are familiar with the neighborhood over there. The reason I bought my house there when I moved to Stevensville three years ago was really the quality and character of the neighborhood. It's very, very family-oriented, um, it, it was, at the time when my wife and I bought it, we thought it was ideal place for, a place for us to come. What's being proposed is in no way of even remotely similar character. It is completely different. It is high-density housing. The developers talk a lot about it meeting the minimum area for the zoning, but that's not what you should be comparing it to. You should be comparing it to, to the lot size of the project as it stands right now, and as it's been pointed out by other people. This results in as many as three houses for the same lot size. This is not in the same character as the existing development. So I would ask you, you need to really seriously consider what's going on here and how it's going to impact the current residents. We are going to lose money on our property values, I think the notion that that doesn't happen, in fact, improves property value, is laughable frankly. It's not going to happen. We've got a very vague, uh, description of what's being proposed on the site now, but as you can imagine, our minds are running wild here because things are so vague, we don't know what people are going to build there, they're selling lots. I think you can understand the, uh, the concern. It just is not in keeping with the, the, the place as it stands today, and they're providing pretty nominal, uh, reason to want to change the zoning from its existing zoning. It just looks like they're just trying to get more bang for their buck, which is fair if you're doing it in the right location, but this is not the right location. This is not a place that you can take and mess with and have it still retain the same spirit and character in which it was built. I, I would advise, ask you all to very seriously consider what's likely to happen to this plot of land if they are allowed to develop as we suspect they might. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Can I, yeah, let me comment on something that you said.
Let, let me, uh, just put a pause, you, you did have over 10 minutes, so-
I was over 10?
Yeah. Yeah, um, is, is there anybody else who wishes to speak for or against this rezon request?
Yes.
Would you come up to the podium, state your name and address?
My name's Ira Goodman, I live on 1700 Elk Run. I feel like most of the people that we've talked to over there all kind of have the same worries and concerns, uh, so, we're just now learning today, like I said, the letter that we got, I was one of the ones against the fence, so I did actually receive a letter, unlike a lot of the people we've spoken to. But, again, that says Elk Run Phase Four is what we've been told, now they're changing the name. If they're changing the name, why does it even connect at all, one? This is selfish of me because I live on Elk Run. We moved over there because I have three little boys, we lived on Blue Bonnet, turned into a highway, people would race in front of us, they play in the yard, we didn't have sidewalks over there, moved out to Elk Ridge, it'd be quieter, people driving through because they live there. We live on the edge of Elk Run, so right now it goes to trees, uh, but, I mean, about half of that's going to become a cut-through, well, if they're blocked coming down, they're going to cut through right in front of my house and we got traffic all over again, uh, which is inevitable, but if there's three houses to R1, there's going to be a lot more cars crammed in there. I mean, I feel like a lot of people said it, uh, why hit the minimum? Again, like he just said, I mean, once they sell the lot, they don't care, I mean, it's all said and done then. Uh, but I mean, I, we all, for the people I've talked to, we all have the same concerns. Safety, home value, taxes, uh, and like I said, just, it should match. Originally, it's all saying it's going to be Phase Four, it's going to continue the look of Elk Ridge, it should be exactly the same. We agree with that, if it's the same and comparable, you know, yeah, that's great, but if it's not going to be, like I said, it, it just kind of hurts everybody that's already there. You have one minute.
Is there anybody else who wishes to speak for or against?
Justin Freiter, 990 Elk Ridge. Obviously against it, like everyone else in here that knew about it. Uh, I think that gets us up to about 100% of the people that did know about it. May not be 100% of the neighborhood. The people that are here, uh, Megan, she's a great neighbor, great person, nothing against her, but she's working for somebody that she obviously has their interests at heart, which is to make the most money they can off of the lots that they have. There's no benefit to anyone in Elk Ridge, there's only downside. If they come in and build it exactly the same as what we already have, we don't have a leg to stand on to oppose it. But at the same time, even if they build exactly what we have, we don't have any proof that, uh, any traffic has been taken into consideration. Say that there's traffic studies, we don't have a traffic study to look at. We should have a traffic study before it's ever rezoned. Also, with the original phases of Elk Ridge, there were a lot of problems with the original construction of the infrastructure that haven't been addressed, still. I'm sure that the City of Stevensville set out guidelines for the specs that all this was supposed to be built at, but none of the original Phase One road was built to spec. And, uh, if you want to go take core samples right now, I'll, I'll bet money on it that not one single inch of the original road was built to spec, or it would hold up to light vehicle traffic at the very worst, garbage trucks, which it does not do, which now, the City of Stevensville is accountable for because of taking over ownership of the road. I mean, that's generally how construction works, developers are responsible for the original costs, Stevensville takes it over, but Stevensville has to maintain it. Does the cost of maintaining the roads, being built without any sort of oversight, outweigh the tax base that is going to be taken in on the new lots? But, that being said, the roads that are already falling apart, how are they ever going to hold up with twice as many cars for half as much space? And how are we ever going to justify putting twice as many cars with one more entrance when, as far as I know, we're at the maximum allowable traffic for one entrance already? So from what I understand, if we're doubling the lots, or doubling the amount of lots, they need at least two more entrances on the other side, and at that point, why are they connected to ours at all? Anyway, didn't have a lot of time to prepare anything because didn't have a lot of notice that this was even going to happen, which I feel like everyone involved needs more notice.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else who wishes to speak for or against? Yes, sir. Four, come on up.
You've got my name, what's Megan's there?
Uh, yes, but, uh, please go ahead and repeat it with your address.
Good evening, I'm Wes Bishop, I actually live in Morgan Mill, uh, I do not live in Elk Ridge Estates, but, um, I've been involved in that project quite a bit. I, I did a couple of things, uh, there was, there's been some, a lot of words used as facts. Uh, one thing I want to say is I very much appreciate the City of Stevensville has good codes, good ordinances, good subdivision requirements, and great systems in place to ensure that things are built according to the, to the policies and the planning that the City of Stevensville is doing. So, this is a, another development of single-family homes that we've been approached by folks in the city, uh, to develop, and we're grateful to do, to have the opportunity to do so. Uh, it provides a much-needed opportunity for folks to build brand-new, single-family homes of an architectural styling they would choose on their own lot. Uh, I can't speak to what would specifically get built because it might look like Erin Compton's house, or it might look like Richard and Gigi's house. Those are different architectural stylings, I don't know what, what they might choose to do so. Uh, I can tell you it will meet the subdivision code requirements, the building code requirements, and it will, it will follow all the necessary steps for permitting and, and certificate of occupancies, or they won't get to live there, because that's the law in Stevensville. Uh, I can also tell you that this, one of the recent words was that it's double the lots. It's 67 lots on 17 and a half acres, and Elk Ridge Phase One and Two, I think, is close to 72 or 3 lots on 18 acres. So, the reality is, the lot size is very comparable to Elk Ridge Estates. The secondary thing is, the, there are some lots that are narrower than, than lots in Elk Ridge Estates, that is true, and that's the reason for the rezon requirement, or a request. Uh, the connection into Elk Ridge Estates is a requirement by the fire department, uh, they ask us to do so, so they have the access to and from the neighborhoods, um, so that's why that is there. In regards to the traffic impact studies and all the things that are, that are being done by the engineers, and that's a requirement of TechDOT, they have reviewed the preliminary plans and, and what is being proposed, uh, and will be finalized by the engineers and approval by TechDOT, will be a, and, and ingress and egress at least as similar to what's in Elk Ridge Estates, uh, off of 914. And so my guess is there'll be a lot of Elk Ridge Estates traffic that will come through Bear Hill to exit out and, and get out just one step closer to the, to the main highway than, than they currently are. The other part of this is, with the new subdivision ordinance, you get sidewalks, so it's a walkable, connected community, which, with brand-new housing that, uh, can match architectural stylings as what exists in Elk Ridge Estates, and some houses may be some different style, again, I, I couldn't speak to that. It isn't that I can't speak to the development or road qualities or infrastructure, we'll have to do exactly what the law requires us to do, uh, to meet the requirements of the city and to provide a, a safe, um, proper fire lane, proper access points and, and proper driveways and sidewalks as necessary for the subdivision. If there's other questions, I'd love to have them, I don't do Facebook, I've got a Facebook pa, uh, what's that called? I've got a Facebook profile, uh, I got it when I lived in China 15 years ago or 16 years ago, and I, I look at it sometimes, but I don't use it, so I don't do the social media stuff to, to deal with any of these things, but always happy to have conversations with anyone who wants to.
Thank you very much, sir.
Appreciate your time.
Does anybody else wish to speak for or against?
I have a clarifying question about what you know of sidewalks, and am I able to do that?
Um, I, I will clarify that, whoa, at the, at the end of the, once I close this, I'll, I'll let you know about sidewalks. Does anybody else wish to speak for or against this rezon request? All right, I'm going to close the public hearing, so that, that's it for public comments. Um, I want to address a few things, I'll, I'll start with sidewalks, yes, because it is now a requirement for all subdivisions in Stevensville to have sidewalks. sidewalks, so they will be required to put in sidewalks. curb and gutter and sidewalks, that's required.
On the new, on the new areas?
On the new areas, correct.
Or on the existing?
No. No. No, no. They, they don't go back and do that. There, there's a program where if homeowners want to do it, the city will help with the cost of that, or at least there used to be. I don't know if that still exists. But, but no, they don't, they, they won't go back to developments that already are in existence. It's just new developments. Um, okay, I was just trying to take notes as I went along. I also want to note there were two letters of opposition. One was Mr. Bush, um, and there was another. Steve, would you like to address the medium-density definition versus high-density?
So this, this would actually kind of qualify as a medium-density. Low-density would be the, the R1 in our particular zoning model. That allows five to six lots per acre. And if you think about density and the minimum lot dimensions per acre, um, with the forty-three, five, sixty square foot in an acre, and then each lot size, an R1 being seventy-five-hundred minimum dimension, um, so that's where you derive the density. With this R1, it does drop down to five thousand square foot, uh, for the minimum lot dimension, so, uh, do the math and get to forty-three, five, sixty, but you have to consider that the roadways and detention requirements, uh, easements, common area, all of that comes off of the, of the total number. So the density, uh, overall is reduced by the development in essence, just because of the requirements in order to get the lots constructed, uh, streets and easements, as mentioned. So the density here would roughly allow for, I did the math a minute ago, but about eight lots per acre. And what they are proposing, uh, is actually down to three-point-four-six lots per acre. And so, uh, I think that may address the density question. Looking at sixty-seven lots on seventeen acres is what, uh, Mr. Bishop presented, and doing the math on that, it drops it down to, uh, less density than what is allowed even by R1, a lower density, even if it was, uh, continued as R1.
The proposed development is less dense than what could be proposed under R1. What could be built under R1.
Under the math, yes, sir. With this ma-, raw numbers alone, uh, now, if we had a site plan and detention and easements and streets were all taken out, that six would be greatly reduced. Five to six lots would be greatly reduced. But here, they are actually proposing three-point-four-six lots with the site plan that they have. Three, three-point-four-six lots per acre, I believe is what the math was.
The seventeen acres, does that include all the, uh, streets and cul-de-sacs?
Yes, sir.
Um, I, I-
As part of the figure.
What about the other issues that come with it, like sites?
Okay, but I'm sorry. Sorry. Um, there, there seemed to be, uh, I mentioned at some point that, that there was no max, that there was no maximum size of? O- o- on these builds, they can, uh, square footage-wise, for R1.5, what is the minimum?
R1.5, minimum, uh, size of the home is a thousand square foot.
And there is no maximum?
There's no maximum unless you consider, to get to a maximum, you would have to think about the pad size that's allowed through the setbacks.
Okay.
And when you get to the pad side, the remainder of the lot that's left that you can actually build a structure on, that would be your footprint, and you can go up, obviously vertically, uh, to a height of thirty-five feet. So you would have to do the calculation on whatever the pad size is and the number of stories and how many rooms.
Got it. Okay, and finally, Steve, can you address the, the transparency issue? What is the standard procedure for notification in this type of situation?
Yes, ma'am. The city is obligated to follow a state statute, which is in the local government code, Chapter Two Twelve. That defines what is required for a public hearing and the amount of notice, uh, as far as the methodology of notice, and defines the radius of notice of the rezon request. So in Chapter Two Twelve, uh, any property that is being rezoned, we have to issue notice to adjacent properties within a two-hundred-foot radius of the property that is being requested for rezon. That's what we did. Forty-four properties, I believe, is what I counted as we were listening to testimony that were notified. That same statute also defines how we provide notice. We mail notice, that's one step. We publish notice in a local newspaper, which is still a requirement by state law, even though most people don't really read newspapers anymore. And then we also place it on our website, which is an additional step that we do. Packet's been made available since, uh, last Friday. We, once we get the applications, we have to have time to, to, uh, review the application, meet with the developer, answer staff questions, put the presentations together. Those packets are sent out on Friday before the meeting to the commissioners, and it's also posted on the city website. Lastly, we are required to put a public notice on the city, city's bulletin board, so it's posted out front of City Hall, uh, a minimum of seventy-two hours prior to the, the hearing. We posted this notice, I believe, on Friday, and it's certified by signature on the date and time that we post the notice. We always try to post it before five P.M. on Friday. Ms. Straighthand knows that I don't like waiting until the last minute, so if we can get it out there early, I, I like to do that because I don't, I'm afraid of, you know, letting it slip past me. And if we miss one of those notice requirements, we can't have the public hearing, and so we try to be very diligent in those efforts.
Thank you, sir. All right, commissioners, we need a motion to discuss.
I recommend to counsel denial of RZ eighty-seven fourteen.
Hold on a second. Discuss.
What I'm looking at is a fifty-foot frontage, which is also the same width as the road. Trying to build a house inside of a fifty-foot confinement is not going to be very good, especially when you're looking at, uh, what was the measurement there? It was thirty-six foot wide for the structure. Fifteen of that at minimum is going to be a garage and driveway. That leaves you with fifteen foot for your front door, windows, whatever you got off the front, a yard that's visible, and you're trying to sell it to a single-family home. It's not happening. I wouldn't buy that. And, uh, from that, you're only getting the depth of the property, but to try to access the back of the property, you're backed up to other neighbors on one side and then a, uh, another landowner on the other side. You can't get to the back of the property to do any maintenance if you had to. And if you're wanting to put in a pool or something like that, you can't do it. And, uh, it's just too dense.
I believe it's less dense, though, than what's allowed under R1.
But as far as being next to your neighbor, you really got to love your neighbor here.
I, I, I hear that, but I also know that developers are having a hard time being able to develop, uh, being able to afford to develop. Um, and one of the ways they are trying to solve that problem and turn a profit is by going with smaller lot sizes.
But at the same time, there hasn't really been any other lots available in a, uh, R1 configuration in town here lately. We've already converted over two-hundred acres that were, uh, R1 designations to either a two-point-five or some other designation other than R1. Nobody's developed an R1.
I think you just made a recent point.
Right. Because there's nobody, there's no developer providing this kind of neighborhood as an R1.
I, I'm, I'm fearful that, because Stevieville, um, does not have a lot of people with a lot of money, that they won't, that, that developers are trying to get in at a low price point. And in order to get in a low price point, they have to go with a smaller-
Which drives the individual lot size higher.
Right. And I'm, I'm just saying that, that will there be people to buy these if they?
Sure there will. We've got a whole bunch of new companies coming in. They're going to have, uh, managers and everybody else that's going to have that kind of income to be able to live in these neighborhoods. This is a spot zone setup and designated R1 neighborhood, and like we're saying, the values are in change.
But it's not under our new configuration, under our new comprehensive plan. This is perfectly acceptable.
Right, which is going to kill the entire neighborhood here.
I, I, I question that. Other people have some?
I had a question for Mr. Bre-, if I, okay. Okay, I'll ask Mr. Killen. Do we know, was there ever, how many lots could they have fit if we didn't change a thing? Is there a study on that? Did they do that? We got sixty-seven, I think, this way. How many would it have been the other way, leaving it like it is? Is that a fair question?
Yes.
Mr. Schloss, and that, that's, uh, kind of what I've alluded to earlier. These are generally designed by engineers, uh, because they know layouts and how to get streets and easements and every, and lot dimensions in there. I can't speculate as to what a site plan might look like. Can I answer the question? Um, I can't speculate as to what the lot dimensions would, or what the density would be on a site plan I've never seen. So all I can go with is what the current acreage is and what the minimum lot dimension requirements are for that particular type of zone. So for R1 on seventeen acres, it would be seventy-five-hundred square foot minimum lot dimension. For forty-three-thousand-five-hundred-sixty square foot on an acre, times seventeen-point-four-six, that would give you the maximum density. But that's not realistic because that, then you have to subtract out your streets, your easements, any type of detention. So it's a target, just so when someone comes into town to look at a piece of property, they know, okay, I can possibly get this many houses in there, but once I start doing my design, it's going to decrease. And so really, the only way to look at a raw piece of property is know the minimum lot dimension and how many acres you have. And you do the math on it, and then you subtract out the requirements for the development as far as easements, streets, um, et cetera. Detention, detention's going to be a big part of it.
All right, any more discussion? Are we ready to vote?
I just want to say that if this does not go through right here, there's going to be something put there regardless. It's, it's going to be houses. So one way or another, there's going to be access going through that neighborhood. People keep talking like, you know, they just don't want anybody going through there. It's going to happen, one way or another. Maybe not this plot, but eventually it will happen. So that's all I want to say.
All right, we're going to go ahead and bring this to a vote. We're going to do-
I'd like to request a roll call vote, please.
Yes, we're going to do a roll call vote, and we are going to start with James. The motion stands, uh, to, uh, to recommend to counsel, uh, not, to recommend counsel to not approve this rezon request, to not approve.
I'm a nay.
You are a nay, saying you wish, okay.
Correct.
Nick?
Nay.
Brian?
Yes.
I'm a nay. Bonnie?
Nay.
Justin?
Nay.
Tyler?
Yes.
Yes, you want to recommend to counsel that this not go through? Wait, yes, you want to recommend to counsel?
Yes, to deny.
To deny? Yes, okay, thank you. All right, uh, so that is one, two, three, four, five, wait, one, two, three, four, five nays, two yeses. That is two-thirds of the group. This will go forth to counsel with, uh,
No recommendation.
With no recommendation. So y'all, your next move is to show up to the city council meeting, which is the first Tuesday of May, uh, at the same time, in this same place. You will, uh, do exactly what you did here tonight. Come with your, your lists and your grievances, and you will present this to the city council, and they make the final decision. It is up to them. So, um, that is your next call to action. Uh, thank you all for coming tonight. If you want to leave, you are welcome to. If, uh, you want to stick around and listen to the rest of the meeting, you are also welcome to.
I'm just down the street. So there's a house that's in all the streets that has either been sold or rented. No, that's the, the- That is causing, I see what you're suggesting here.
Is it really?
How do you address?
I didn't even look at it.
Jane, can you give me one of my business cards, please?
Yes. Uh, you'll be able to contact him.
Sure enough, it is.
Yeah.
It's a confirm, it's one of the things.
A little weird, yeah, yeah, suicide, got it.
Depends on the, how many- For some reason, I thought it was just-
Well, there, at first, there was four, and now there's a total of ten.
I don't know if I can remember, I just happened to look on the table, yeah.
Yeah, that's the-
All right, thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, uh,
That makes a big difference.
Let's move this forward. It's been a long night, so let's, let's keep going. Uh, uh, application number RZ eight-seven-three-nine, applicant Kevin Maynard, representing M&amp;F Project One Eight Eight Five LLC, is requesting a rezon of property located at one-six-four East College, parcel R two-nine-one-five-seven, being block two, lots B, C, and D of city addition to the city of Stevieville, Yorath County, Texas, from DT Downtown to PD Plan Development. The applicant will present a conceptual plan. Mr. Killen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioners, uh, Mr. Maynard recently acquired this property. It was the previous senior center building, and he has, uh, brought a plan to us. He is asking for consideration for a plan development only because it is in the downtown district. Downtown district allows for residential use, it allows for commercial use, but it doesn't allow for a mixed-use development. And so that is why we're coming forward, asking for a plan development. In your packet, we did include the seminal that he provided to us, which shows the retail space on the bottom, uh, residential on the top. You might recall we had a similar, uh, case like this on the opposite side of the square, uh, a while back, and that developer is, uh, about to begin moving forward with that project, if he hasn't already. And so this is very similar in nature. It's to allow for a mixed use, which, when you read the comprehensive plan, it actually states that we would like the downtown district to be used for a mixed-use type concept. And so, uh, under the previous, uh, comprehensive plan, it even indicated that in the previous comprehens-, comprehensive plan, states it again in the current comprehensive plan, uh, Stevieville twenty-fifty. The only thing is, as I mentioned earlier, we haven't updated our land use regulations to align with that comprehensive plan yet. Uh, we're trying to move forward with that. One thing that we'll definitely need to address is that, uh, with counsel blessing, is that the downtown district be, uh, authorized for a mixed use without having to go through a rezon request. So, uh, I'm sure you may have more specific questions than that, but I just wanted to point out that we've, uh, approved something similar to this, uh, on the square, and Mr. Maynard and, uh, his son were both here tonight and will be able to answer any specific questions about the development itself. With that, Madam Chair, I'd be glad to answer anything that I possibly can.
Any questions for Steve?
I don't know if this is a question you can answer if it needs to be brought up when the developer gets up, but are they planning to keep the outside of the building the same? Or are they going to do a complete demolition?
I believe there's going to be a bit of a facelift on the exterior of the building, but it's, it's going to-
Retain its features.
Facelift be the same, same footprint.
Same first, same floor.
And I believe they, they are asking for consideration of going to a third floor, uh, at our last conversation. So again, I'd prefer to get-
But they're not bulldozing the facilities, they're just going to improve upon it.
I'm sorry?
They're just going to improve upon the facilities, not bulldoze it.
That's correct. No demolition planned because, uh, as I mentioned, the, in the packet is actually the, uh, building thing supplemental that they sent to us about two weeks ago.
All right, any other questions for Steve? Mr. Maynard, who would like to speak with us?
Yeah, so the, the concept that we are coming up with is, um, upstairs, we will have lofts in the, the main building that we want to, that the proposal's for us, for the eighteen-eight-five building. That's why it's named, uh, M&amp;F Eighteen-Eight-Five LLC. Um, that's the year we believe it was constructed. We want to restore that back to its original grandeur, um, have retail downstairs, and then two lofts for residential upstairs. One will be two-bedroom, two-and-a-half bath. The other side would be one-bedroom, one-and-a-half bath. And then the, the attached, um, building, which is the, the newer building that's, doesn't have the historic value, uh, we would propose to demolish that and build a, a new structure that would look like old buildings. So it would look like a series of old buildings, and it's going to be the marquee block in the city, I believe. Residential would be on floors two and three. Um, one would be retail and commercial- One would be retail and commercial, and possibly a rooftop restaurant with deck, outdoor fireplaces, things like that. So, that's, that's what we would like to do on that, on that whole site.
Sounds fantastic. Any other questions for Mr. Maynard?
I had one, but I forgot it.
I got you on the rooftop deck.
Okay, nice, all right. All right, thank you, sir.
You bet.
Appreciate it.
So, Madam Chair, if I may?
Yes.
No public hearing required. I think we historically always have a public hearing, but I think what, what we're really looking for tonight is if the commission has any suggestions to the developer.
Oh, yeah.
Because it's only a conceptual plan, we're not asking for approval tonight. We will come back next month or at the schedule that Mr. Maynard needs to proceed, and at that time, we'll bring back the full PD request and the request for the rezon.
Okay. Thoughts for Mr. Maynard? My, my thought is yes. Yes, yes, please, that sounds fantastic.
I like that you're keeping the downtown structures.
Yeah.
Because that's been a big fear of downtown.
Yeah, we have some conceptual ideas that we would like to share with you next time.
And you're the type of developer we really need downtown.
Thank you.
What are you planning on doing for parking?
Well, we have the, the large parking lot is on, in the backside, so we will have, there's some street parking, obviously, out front. Mainly, the residents would park in the back.
That was going to be my question. Have you considered doing like a bed and breakfast?
We have. We've also thought of a boutique hotel. I think there's a big need for that as well.
I think I could have got one kind of like that.
Yeah.
All right, any other input, feedback? All right, thank you, sir, we appreciate it.
You bet.
Look forward to seeing your full proposal.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we are going to go forward to item number twelve, application number CUP eight seven three seven. Trevor Hudson, representing Michael Plank, owner of NPH Ventures LLC, is requesting a conditional use permit to allow the operation of an auto paint and body shop repair in a B-two retail and commercial district for property known as nine oh two North Wolf, Wolf Nursery Road Parcel R seven two nine nine four, being block one, lot three of the DOS Edition Phase Three of the City of Stevieville, Eroth County, Texas. Steve?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioners. As you may recall, this property was previously brought to P&amp;Z and City Council for a rezone request. It's across from the new stadium, it's under construction. The reason they had to come forward with a rezone request is because our B-two zoning district does not allow for an auto paint and body shop, or it didn't at the time. We have situations across the city where we can have a B-two property on one side of the street, industrial next door or across the street. Industrial allows for a paint and body shop, B-two doesn't. So, we came forward with the rezone request for caliber collision. P&amp;Z actually recommended approval, and when it got to City Council, it was denied. And so, since that time, we've had council member requests that be brought back, not necessarily the rezone request, but, but the prohibition of a auto paint and body shop in a B-two district. So, that was reviewed by the Development Services Committee approximately two months ago, and then they directed staff to bring back a proposed revision to the ordinance, and so, we brought that back, and then they assigned it to P&amp;Z. It's been more than two months. Came back to P&amp;Z and then went forward to council favorable decision on that rezon, or I'm sorry, on the, the revision to the B-two zoning district. So, we established a conditional use under the B-two zoning district for auto paint and body shops, and then you might recall, we expanded the definition and clarified some of the authority that this board would have, this commission would have, as well as the city council in reviewing the CUP, and the requirements that you can place on the CUP if you are going to consider to grant the CUP. And so, just a little history there. Mike Listis and I have been working on this off and on for, you know, since the first rezone request, we've stayed in, in touch. Mike is here tonight. He did provide a PowerPoint presentation that's in your packet, and he has asked for a few minutes to visit with the commission, and this is their request, so I'm not here to necessarily try to sell it or defray from the interest of it. So, I'm going, going to, with your permission, Madam Chair, ask Mike Listis come up and present his request to the commission. Thank you.
Sir, would you like to go on?
Happily. Mike Listis with Cross Architects, located at twelve fifty-five West Fifteenth in Plano. Madam Commissioner, Commissioners, Director Killen, thank you very much for having me here this evening. So, what you'll see on that first slide there is just kind of that snapshot showing the improvements that are proposed to the building, and I believe everybody's familiar with the second slide, which is the location, but just for reference, we wanted to make sure we included it in there as a refresher for everyone. And then, from there, we get to some of the improvements that are proposed. So, this particular view you'll see is the aerial view, and you can see the outline of the fencing that is required per the city. Now, this is a black slat vinyl, so this means that unless you are flying a drone over the property, you will not see any vehicles inside of that lot, save those that are actual clientele, which would be in the visitor spaces. This would also be a good point for me to point out that the way this particular entity operates, those vehicles will never be on that site for more than about four weeks. The reason for that is they do not take vehicles that are so damaged that they qualify essentially as irreparable, up to and including if a vehicle is dropped off at that site, or a tow truck, for example, were to arrive with one, it will be turned away. If you'll go to the next slide, please? All right, so, a couple of things that I just wanted to point out to help make sure everybody understands the operations of the space. The image, excuse me, the element on the right-hand side of the screen, that would be your office, lobby spaces and so forth. This is the public-facing element of the building, and there are some images that you'll see later on in the package to demonstrate the quality of the space. A couple of the other key components that are inside of the building would be the blue area, which would be where they do detailing, wash down, et cetera. Again, this all occurs inside of the building. This happens with the doors closed because this is a heated and ventilated space, meaning air conditioning. The next elements which you would see at the top are the two-post lift, which is basically just a vehicle lift where they raise the vehicle in order to do a review of it, confirm that there is not damage that is beyond what would qualify for repair. The element in yellow would be what's called a frame rack. That's where they make adjustments to the vehicle if it's damaged to make sure that it's straight and safe for driving. And then, the last element is the one that I know has expressed concern for many people, and that would be the paint booth element. So, that's the element in orange. That is a fully enclosed paint booth that operates with a full filtration system, in addition to full fire suppression, not only for the building, but for that booth itself. If we'll move on to the next slides, you can see a little bit better images in terms of how their, how the proposed look of the building will be improved upon. So, key things to point out in this slide as well as the next one. Again, you'll see on the left-hand side, and to a degree on the right-hand side, the fence that surrounds the property, you will note that this is based on actual chain-link fence with the slatted elements. So, what you see in that rendering is as accurately as we can present it in terms of visibility control. Now, if somebody did stand at the fence, next slide's fine, they could theoretically see through it, but you obviously have to be on the property being nosey at that point. So, this slide just shows a little bit of the same changes. You'll see that this is an opportunity to point out that Caliber Collisions typically has their logos with a black background. Because this is Tarleton State area, they made it a point to change that to purple. So, that would be one differentiating factor between this property and those elsewhere. That's not usually something that they do, but they do like to do it whenever it's tight-knit communities like this one. Next slide, please. So, this would be the last one, which, again, is just sort of a zoomed-in image so that you can see a little bit better what the improvements to the front face of the building are. Anything that is on that building that is currently damaged will be repaired. That is a function of the requirement, not only of the developer that I'm representing this evening, but that is also a function of the requirements for Caliber Collision themselves. If, say, that awning and the canopy element in the front were damaged or something like that, that would be a required repair, or they will not take occupancy within the building. So, that gets us to the last couple of slides here as far as the actual operations of the building. What you see on screen are examples of the actual paint booth that's utilized. So, without getting into too much detail, these are what operate on what's called a downdraft-type system, which means any air that comes into that space actually comes down across the top of the vehicle and is pulled down through the floor. So, two things are required in there. One, in order to operate in such a fashion that the vehicle's going to be painted to meet current factory finishes, it has to have the space fully enclosed. It also means that any and all air is evacuated away from the vehicle, in this case, through the floor, because that's the most efficient way to guarantee proper paint matching. And then, obviously, the last part of it is it's fully filtered. So, you see those two elements, the largest one that's in the foreground is actually your return. That's the one that goes up to the filters, which are vented through the roof. So, the filters, in this case, actually, if you were to stand next to that filter, you would find that the air coming out of that's actually cleaner than the air in most buildings. So, the space that we're sitting in right now most likely has poor air quality than what comes out of those filters. The last part of that being, of course, that those filters are required to be changed, not only in accordance with any local ordinances, as well as the state of Texas. Caliber also has their own internal requirements based on the operation of the booths, based on either an hourly time and/or a timeframe within a given, I believe it is a six-month period, but it may actually be three. Very rarely do they hit the maximum timeframe. Usually, they change them out because of the hourly requirements. The last couple of images are some examples of what you would see in terms of finishes inside the building after it's completed, and because this has been converted to a PDF, I think we'll need to go down a little bit farther. Two more slides? One more. There we go. So, that is an example of a previous project. This is what we considered an average project. There are much worse ones that have been improved, including projects that had been recommended for demolition. We were able to rescue, bring back, and turn into an actual proper functioning business. So, this project, those images that you see, those are as close a view as we can provide to the same views before and after. With that, I would be happy to take any questions, and thank you again for your time this evening.
Thank you, sir. Commissioners, any questions? All right, thank you, sir.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Okay. Let's go ahead and open a public hearing. Does anybody here wish to speak for or against? Closing the public hearing. Commissioners, we need a motion to discuss.
I recommend to council denial of CUP eighty-seven thirty-seven.
Give her a second. And that fails?
Make a motion to recommend the city council approval of CUP eighty-seven thirty-seven?
Second.
So, some, sorry, James, been a long night. Concerns. One concern I have is about the fence. Could we do something better than chain with, with slats? So, could we do board-on-board to make that a better, stronger?
They got to be able to open the fence. I bet that's an opening that fence a lot of time.
Well, no, I mean, it's, it's just a chain link, so it would be a way to, remember that we can set, part of what we're allowed to do with these conditional uses, we can set the rules as we want them. So, I'm proposing some things that we could, that we could choose to make this more careful.
The board-on-board, I would see it as more of a wind barrier, and in a high-wind situation, it'd be more prone to fall over as the chain link is still, even with the slats in there that allow airflow.
I'm just considering aesthetics here.
But from the street, you won't be able to see through it. It'd be like trying to see through the fence at like Chamberlain or into the schools, which is real hard to do.
It's not a traditional chain line, right? It's the one with the.
It'd have the, like, the black coating on it with the black slats.
May I just suggest that if you want to entertain maybe a better fence than proposed, let the developer just leave here with that recommendation?
Okay, okay.
And not necessarily have to define it to.
More specifically.
Just a suggestion.
Yeah. Other suggestions do we have?
My biggest concern is the fire in the paint booth due to chemicals. And with that fire concern, we've got a junior high, two sports complexes, two apartment complexes in adjacent facilities, and right next door, you've got tires waiting for collection that members can follow on to, and turn into pretty good hazardous fire.
All right, but his description of the paint booth and ventilation is not sufficient for you, or?
Well, it's great for airflow, which is also bad for fire, because it'll get like barbecue pit, the way they're designed. But it's great for airflow to run a fire, and all that chemicals falling into the hood for collection.
They assured me that that paint booth was like top-notch.
Top-notch.
It was, it's, it's a real deal.
I'm sure.
And I believe he spoke of fire suppression as well. He did, and he said individually, within the, each booth, it had fire suppression.
There's a wonderful fire department three hundred yards down the road.
But I would hate to have to entertain and tell him to.
Madam Chair, if we have a second on the motion?
We did, it was James. Yep, okay.
But that's my one concern.
Any other concerns?
I believe it's a carbon air filter though. I think the, I don't know if it's a fire marshal that I was talking to last time, but he, he did say that.
If it's carbon, it won't burn, but it's already burnt.
Well, just the, the base chemicals.
All right, so, do, can we vote? Yes? All right, so, the, the motion stands to recommend to council approval of this conditional use permit. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed?
I'm still afraid of the fire.
Okay, everybody else?
Just because of the location, that's all.
All right. Thank you, sir, for your patience. I know it's been a long night. So, your next stop is city council.
Yes, ma'am. Not my first rodeo, so thank you very much for your time.
I have seen other buildings for yours.
If you like, I can, I know this is slightly out of order, but I can speak to the fire question if you like.
I'm good.
It's all right. We're good, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, next item on the agenda is committee assignment zero four two zero two five. The Development Services Committee has tasked the commission with review and subsequent recommendation regarding the revocation of the land use regulation that limits lot coverage of the primary structure of forty percent of the total area, the required minimum lot dimensions for residential districts. Steve?
Thank you, ma'am. Madam Chair, Commissioners, a local developer that is looking at building some homes on a property zoned R two-point-five, in a meeting that I had with him one day, mentioned that the forty percent limitation for the primary structure on a lot dimension, the fifty-by-sixty lot dimension, for example, in R two-point-five, can be pretexting on a developer, and with the limited square footage available, because of that forty percent limitation, makes it difficult for them to build a home and be profitable on a lot of that nature. So, what he and I discussed, and I told him that I would bring before the committee, which they reviewed and assigned to, to P&amp;Z for a review and public hearing, is if we remove that forty percent limitation, and the developer is required to build that primary structure within the setbacks of the lot requirements itself, would that be, would that be acceptable to this particular developer? He thought that was perfectly fine, a good approach. I did speak with, or briefly mentioned this with our Public Works Department, concerns with any type of drainage issues that may cause. Basically, I believe the, the thought process is, is that the submittals are always going to be reviewed by engineers, and the detention is going to be the detention, and so, if they meet the setback requirements and they meet the drainage requirements per the engineering study, no real opposition. So, I did go through each zoning district, and I looked at each permitted use for residential zoning districts. And so, there are a number, if you do the calculations, take the minimum lot area dimension and square footage, and then you subtract out the setback area to get to that forty percent limitation. You'll see the difference in those two, two columns on the, on the right. So, there are. So there are cases where the 40% limitation reduces the build, the building pad, in some cases fairly significantly. Let's use RE as the first, the first one as an example. The setback area on a 37,500 square foot lot is the minimum dimension of that lot. The setback area would allow for an 18,000 square foot pad. The 40% limitation drops it down to a 15,000 square foot pad. There are also many that the 40% completely aligns with the setback requirements. And then there are a few where that 40% goes a little above the setback allowance. And so generally, what we address these with, how we would address this, is through the Board of Adjustment. And so if you had a lot that you wanted a bigger building pad than what the setbacks would allow, or beyond what the 40% limitation allows, that would be a Board of Adjustment hearing, and the Board of Adjustment would make the decision on granting the variance. It's only appealable through District Court, truly only if it's because the Board of Adjustment made an error that acted illegally, not necessarily to the decision itself, is my understanding. So we have a mechanism, but when we're looking at a development, for example, the Bear Hill that we had earlier, when they have multiple lots in that site plan, and each one has to go to the Board of Adjustment, it becomes a little problematic for the developer. And so Mr. Allen, I thought would be here tonight. Apparently, we failed to communicate on when the hearing was. But he had provided an example, and I did put it in your packet. I'm going to make this point, and then I'll be quiet. On a R 2.5, single-family residential lot with dimensions of 50 by 100, using the setbacks of the R 2.5 requirements, would allow a buildable area of a 2,800 square foot pad. The 40% limitation cuts it down to 2,000 square feet. And so he wanted to make that as an example. Again, this went to Development Services Committee and was assigned to P and Z for consideration, public hearing, and recommendation back to the full City Council. And with that, Madam Chair, be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. Anybody have questions for Steve?
So what they're asking is to remove the 40% and just let them build to the size of the setbacks only.
The 40% limitation would no longer be in the, in the zoning district requirements to land use regulations, but the defining or governing regulation would be the lot dimension itself with the setback requirements. Correct.
Okay, is that going to impact on parking, say, in a residential area?
I'm not sure how that would affect the parking.
Because I'm wondering if that 40% limitation, why was it put there? I guess, best question I've got.
Well, that's a good question. I wouldn't be speculating. Again, I, my thought was perhaps related to drainage and trying to control the amount of impervious surface that might be allowed on a residential lot. But then again, if you take in the setback requirements, we're limiting what can be built there without limiting it to 40%, just by the setback requirements alone. I think when you look at the zoning and you see that it tracks the 40% in most residential districts for most uses, I think that was just a calculation that came into play, but it's not always going to hold true, as, as obviously shown on that table. So I don't have a solid answer on that, other than I believe it is possibly related to detention, drainage studies, and just trying to keep some, some green space on a lot.
I like green space.
When they were making the comprehensive plan, was this something that they took into consideration? So actually, what, what we're seeing with current trends across multiple cities, with our state legislature and within our comprehensive plan, we're looking at ways to try to reduce lot size requirements and allow for a more opened approach on housing types and square footage requirements, trying to make that a little more flexible. As you all know, affordable housing is a thing of the past. Every developer we talk to right now, if they can build a home on a lot and touch the 3 to 350 price tag, that's a, that's a win. So it's, it's just to the point, in fact, there's a bill in the legislature right now, SB 15. It will not apply to us because it's capped at a certain population, not wanting the cities to have any ability to regulate a lot dimension above 1,400 square foot. So if it's a 1,400 square foot lot, the legislature says that in those cities, they shouldn't be able to, to require anything more.
Steve, how often are cases like this brought to the Board of Adjustments?
How often?
I mean, is it pretty, I mean, does it happen all the time, or is it...
It's pretty...
Pretty common?
Not so much on new developments, because they can design to meet the requirements. But when you look at existing lots, infill development opportunities, that's when we see most of them, because a lot of the, the lots as they're platted from, you know, back in the 40s and 50s, they don't meet the current requirements, obviously. So when someone comes in to do infill housing, they suddenly have to meet our requirements, even though they were platted that way in the past. So we go to the Board of Adjustment for consideration on experiences.
So not uncommon at all? Not uncommon at all?
It's not uncommon. I would say probably, I bet we handle 15 to 20 a year.
All right, any other questions for Steve? All right, go ahead and open a public hearing. Is there anybody here who wishes to speak for or against this possible new, or this revocation, I should say? Closing the public hearing. Commissioners, we need a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to recommend the City Council revoke the 40% lot coverage limitation.
Second.
Discussion. I think it makes sense.
I agree.
I think it's just logical. All right, are we ready to vote? All those in favor of recommending to counsel revoking the land use regulation that limits lot coverage to 40% say aye. Aye, those opposed?
Me.
We've got two nays. So we've got a nays, Brian and Justin, but we've got two thirds, so that goes fourth with a favorable recommendation to counsel. All right, ladies and gentlemen, I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you very much for your service. Been a long night, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Sorry, Steve, I was...
40%?
My brain was...